Good evening, welcome to our special town meeting, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is being broadcast live on Sandwich Community Television. Please welcome Girl Scout Troop Eight Two One Four Seven and their troop leader Carol Artacho of a brief presentation prior to the meeting.
Hi folks, thank you for having us. My name is Carol Artacho, I use she/her pronouns. I'm the troop leader for Troop Eight Two One Four Seven. And we are here to share with you the great news that three of the girls in our troop received the Silver Award, which is one of the highest awards for the Girl Scouts of the United States. The girls are here and they're gonna tell you all about their project and how they earned this award. We have Sophia, Anne Molly, and Kalina here.
Our project is about illegal bus passes. The reason why we are doing this is because students are endangered by this and we also want to educate drivers who are learning and et cetera of what to do when buses are stopping. We were able to contact community partners such as Superintendent of Sandwich Schools, Dr. Mosaic, Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper, Lucini Bus Services with Samantha Knight, Massachusetts Representative Zaharos, and Sandwich Community Television with Paula Johnson.
Um, we decided to, uh, we decided to try to carry out our project through the form of a video. Um, we really wanted to highlight the fact that getting on and off of the bus is one of the most dangerous parts of the day for a school child. And, um, we were trying to make this more well-known. We wanted to educate drivers on exactly what the law is and why they should avoid illegally passing school buses and why it is such a threat to children's lives. Um, we thought that using an informational video would also be good because we could reach many different audiences through TV, through this meeting, through many different resources. And, um, we researched a bunch of laws regarding, um, illegal bus passings, laws regarding buses, and we've reached out to numerous different sources such as CBS, Fox News, as well as Bus Patrol, who is a company that helps make equipment for buses to help prevent illegal bus passings. We, um, reached out to the, all of these different resources, asking if we could use footage, mostly of close calls with students. And they agreed to it, so we made this video. Um, I helped edit it on After Effects and highlighted some of the main important points with text and different effects and videos. And we all thank you so, so much for having us today. And we hope that you enjoy the video and are able to take away why, um, illegal bus passes are such, um, a big deal and why they are such, um, a huge risk to students' lives. Thank you.
In the first six weeks of the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five school year, over one thousand vehicles illegally passed school buses with their stop arms extended in Sanlam, Massachusetts alone. Around four hundred thousand Massachusetts students are transported by school buses per year. Many of those students' lives are put at risk due to cars illegally passing buses that are actively loading or unloading students at bus stops. Whether you are a driver or a student, it is important to know the current laws regarding school bus stops and how you can protect yourself or a loved one from the dangers at bus stops in your town. Any mode of road transportation, including motorcycles, e-bikes, and even bicycles, must stop for a school bus with its red lights flashing in all fifty states. In Massachusetts, this law applies to any roadway, regardless of how many lanes it is, or even if it is a divided highway. This is set in place to safeguard children's lives.
According to Section fourteen of the Massachusetts General Laws, the only exception to this law is if a school bus has stopped on the other side of a divided highway with a solid barrier between travel directions, or at least twenty feet of an unpaved barrier between travel directions. But you should still exercise caution. You are allowed to resume driving only after the bus lights have stopped flashing and the stop arm has retracted. A bus with its yellow lights flashing is a warning to drivers that the bus is approaching a bus stop. Do not try to speed past the bus when it is in the process of slowing down. The average time for a car to be stopped at a bus stop is around ninety seconds. The most dangerous time in the average school child's day is getting on or off the bus. Speeding through a bus stop puts children's lives in danger. Elementary school children are at the highest risk of getting injured.
An example of this is the true story of a nine-year-old girl named Aubriel from Lake City, Florida. On November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, she was struck by a vehicle that illegally passed her school bus. She was thrown around fifty feet into the air, requiring her bus driver to perform CPR before emergency services arrived. She spent seventy-two hours in the ICU and had to undergo surgeries for a severe head wound and multiple broken bones. Today, Aubriel is still recovering, but this is living proof that you should never illegally pass a school bus. Remember that passing a stopped school bus is illegal and can have grave consequences.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd like to make a suggestion to these, uh, school kids. They have a program out now where the buses have cameras on them. It takes the license plate number and they prosecute by, by that. That's something you may want to follow up on. Because if they do go by, you got the plate number and everything, you got evidence, and you can prosecute. Go ahead.
Uh, they have, but there are some privacy laws that prevent for that footage from being used if there's identifiable, um, individuals in the video. So if they can't, if you have the, the plate but not the folks that are in the car, then you can use that, um, and, uh, police departments across the nation are doing that. But there's also the privacy part where that could be dismissed.
Are you gonna pursue that maybe as the next step?
Maybe. Um, generally, the Silver Award is determined to be a self-sustaining, self-contained, um, award. And so if any of the girls wanted to pursue it for the Gold Award next year, they certainly could do that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was fantastic. I'm gonna keep the girls up here. They're gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now welcome local singer Jean Prendigas to perform the Star Spangled Banner.
Please feel free to sing with me. I'm gonna sing it straight. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets red glare, the bombs bursting in air, give proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was wonderful. Please welcome Reverend Alan Hesse of St. John's to give the invocation.
Hello, everyone. I realize many citizens come from all traditions, faith traditions, or none at all. So I offer this prayer from my Christian perspective. But the goal really is may we all be one community, regardless of differences. Let us pray. Almighty God, as we gather in this special town meeting, we ask for your wisdom and clarity. We pray for those who hold office in the town of Sandwich and the voices gathered this evening. Guide our discussions and decisions, ensuring that we serve the best interest of our community, Sandwich. May Sandwich be a place filled with the spirit of wisdom, charity, justice, and promote the well-being of all people. I pray this through Jesus Christ, my Lord. Amen.
I will now turn it over to Town Manager Bud Dunham for just a few minutes, moments.
Um, hey, everyone. I just wanted to quickly recognize two long-serving town employees, one who retired a few weeks ago and one whose last day is this Friday. So Susan Lundquist, who many of you may know, has been the Assistant Town Clerk in Sandwich for a really long time. Um, she's worked for us for twenty-five years throughout her career, and we want to thank her and wish her well. And Director of Natural Resources Dave DiCanto has served the town since two thousand and seven in an appointed capacity, but he also served in a volunteer capacity on the Conservation Commission since the early nineteen nineties. So I want to thank Dave and Sue for all their service. Uh, all your friends at Town Hall are gonna miss you, but we know we'll, we'll keep in touch, so thank you very much.
Tonight, I encourage you to speak your mind. However, when you do come up to speak, keep it clear, keep it concise, and on topic. Remember to state your name and address. Be respectful, avoid inflammatory rhetoric and redundancy. There are limits of five minutes for your initial statement and two minutes for any follow-up. There is a timer visible for you to keep track of how long you were speaking for, and our time clerk will keep me aware as well. Our voting will be strictly electronic, and Taylor White is going to go into a brief explanation of our voting system.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you who have been to Town Meeting in the last few times, you know that you checked in, you issued these clickers. Uh, there's a yes button and an no button. Very simply, when the moderator calls for a vote on any given question, I will turn on the system, which will receive your votes electronically. Uh, it'll be in effect for thirty seconds. Uh, during that for thirty seconds, you can press yes, no, as many times as you want. But once the thirty seconds expires, whatever button you press last is your vote, so you can, you can change your vote in that thirty-second time period. These clickers do go to sleep in order to save battery, so if you look at your clicker, it might, my, nothing might be on the screen, but if you press the yes or no button, it will activate it. If for any reason anyone is pressing one of these buttons right now and they don't see anything on their screen, please go out and see, um, Alex from my office, and she can replace it for you. Otherwise, the off, the, uh, procedure is fairly easy to follow, and, uh, the moderator will give you the opportunity when the, uh, time comes for it to be turned on, and then I will announce the, um, results up on the screen for everyone to see. Does anyone have any questions about this system? Seeing none, I'll pass it back to you, Mr. Moderator.
Very good. Um, I'd like to extend a special welcome to any new residents or first-time attendees. Your participation is what makes our local government strong. I also want to acknowledge and thank the town officials, committee members, and volunteers whose hard work brings us to this point. And with that, Article One.
That'll help. Move that the town raise and appropriate three hundred Move that the town raise and appropriate three hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred dollars to increase the school department fiscal year operating budget for building, repair, maintenance, and improvement purposes.
Second.
Anything from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends passage of Article One.
Right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. Voting is open. Ten seconds. Voting is closed. The article passes. Article Two.
Article Two. Move that the town amend the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws, Section Thirty-Four-Ninety, compliance with state and federal regulations by inserting the wording highlighted in bold as printed in the warrant under Article Two.
Second.
Is there any discussion? And this is a two-thirds majority vote.
Excuse me, Moderator?
Yes.
Uh, good evening. My name's Nicole Willett. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I would just like to indicate to the community that on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend passage of the proposed zoning amendment, uh, to Section Thirty-Four-Ninety, compliance with state and federal compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any? Leanne?
Good evening. Leanne Drake, Director of Community Development for the town. Um, this section is an administrative housekeeping amendment. We're proposing a change to include a reference to Section two-point-three-point-five of the general permit for stormwater discharge from municipal structures. Um, so this is something that we already do as part of the town's process. However, we were advised by our consultants to add it within our zoning for better compliance with, um, Environmental Protection Agency, the federal agency, and for the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we will open the voting. Ten seconds. Voting is closed. The article passes. And Article Three.
Article Three. Move that the town amend the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws, Section Thirty-Five-Ten, landscaping and screening by deleting the wording highlighted in strike-through and inserting the wording highlighted in bold as printed in the warrant under Article Three.
Second. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, good evening again, residents of Sandwich. Um, the Planning Board did unanimously vote to recommend the passage of this amendment on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
So the purpose of this bylaw amendment is to create a mechanism to review land clearing of ten thousand square feet or greater that's in the absence of a building permit and to implement erosion control measures that take place for when that clearing takes place. To further explain that, the existing language for land clearing and erosion control measures only take place when a building permit review process begins. But there are plenty of instances where a landowner may want to clear their land that would not necessarily need a building permit. This bylaw amendment would create a process whereby we could have a conversation ahead of time so that we can educate you as to the existing regulations, such as the Thirty Percent of Educated Cover bylaw, the proposed future use of your property and to make sure it's compliant, and erosion control measures to protect both private and public infrastructure. There is no cost or approval process associated with this bylaw amendment. And a full reading of it can be found on your warrant on page five.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will open this up to a vote. It is a two-thirds, uh, majority required to pass. And it is open. Ten seconds. Voting is closed. The article passes by the required two-thirds majority. Article Four.
Article Four. Move that the town amend the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws, Table of Contents, Section Twenty-Five Hundred, Intensity of Use Regulations, Section Forty-One-Thirty, Accessory Dwelling Units and Definitions. Accessory Dwelling Unit by inserting the wording highlighted in bold as printed in the warrant under Article Four. Second.
Nicole?
Thank you. Thank you, Moderator. Thank you, residents of the Sandwich. Um, I would like to indicate this evening that the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend the passage of the proposed zoning amendments to add Section Forty-One-Thirty-Five, Expanded Accessory Dwelling Units. I also do want to note here that we took considerable input from the public in developing this, and this is a means of providing an alternative um, in addition to the by right ADUs that are made available, um, per the state. Uh, so thank you very much.
Leanne Drake, Director of Community Development. So the purpose of this bylaw is to create another housing option for property owners. Last February, the Massachusetts Affordable Homes Act came into effect, and at annual Town Meeting last May, we adopted the Protected Use Accessory Dwelling Unit bylaw. Residents at that time expressed concerns over the size limitations of the bylaw. So this summer, the Planning Board crafted a new accessory dwelling unit bylaw and named it the Expanded ADU. A dwelling unit can be eighty percent of the gross floor area of your home, but not larger than fifteen hundred square feet. There are a few requirements for you to qualify for this type of unit. You must have forty thousand square feet of land. You must follow all health and building codes, and you will need a special permit from the Planning Board, which requires a better notification and a public hearing. And a full reading of this proposed bylaw can be found in your warrant on page six.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? And just a reminder, please state your name and your address when you come up to speak.
Eileen Stars, Marshview Circle. I would like to, Mr. Moderator, I would like to start by saying that I understand that people are having a difficult time trying to meet their needs with the cost of living these days. My statement is focused on the planning strategy being proposed by the Planning Board. The Planning Board is recommending that an extra-large ADU be allowed in the bylaws. This extra ADU can, as stated, be either eighty percent of the primary home space or fifteen hundred square feet in size, whichever is smaller. The Board does require a permit for these. However, because the nine-hundred-square-foot ADU is by right, a resident can build both an extended ADU and a nine-hundred-square-foot ADU if they have at least forty thousand square feet. Also, there is no cap on how many of these units can be built in Sandwich each year. These units can only be used for year-round rentals. You may think that these are cost-prohibitive, but as with anything else, those that stand to make money will always find a way to bring the cost down. We have seen them advertised for as little as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They are also proposing loosening restrictions on affordable housing developments, allowing the building of four units per forty thousand square feet. The cap for these developments is ten per year. We currently have three large housing projects in various stages in town. Village Green on Route One Thirty, Wing Residences on Route One Thirty, and Farm View Drive off of Snake Pond Road. The total number of units proposed for these projects is three hundred and thirty-two. Average two vehicles per unit, and you get a picture of what traffic will look like when they're completed. The questions before us are, what kind of town do we want to live in? How will our town have the resources for this influx of people, taking into consideration schools, roads, police, et cetera? Why would we not take a more prudent approach to the planning strategy? And how much building will be enough? These questions apply to both Articles Four and Five on the warrant. Please consider how the character of your neighborhood and the town in general will change if these bylaws are enacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will open the voting. And again, this is a two-third, it requires a two-thirds majority. There are ten seconds remaining. The article failed, did not reach the two-thirds threshold. Article Five.
Article Five. Move that the town amend the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaws, Table of Contents, by deleting the wording highlighted in strike-through below and by deleting Section Four-Four-Five-Zero, Affordable Housing Conditional Density Development in its entirety, replacing it with a new Section Forty-Four-Fifty, Affordable Housing Development as printed in the warrant under Article Five. Second.
Is there anything from the Planning Board?
Yes, thank you. Um, again, I would just like to recognize that we had several members from the community who were supportive of moving this forward. And the Planning Board did vote unanimously to, uh, recommend passage of this zoning amendment. Uh, it is a way to help revitalize some of the empty vacancy, vacant buildings and repurpose things into attainable housing for people. and repurpose things into attainable housing for people. We do recognize that a large number of businesses are often struggling to find workers. And this, there is report that over 50% of the working professionals are traveling on a regular basis from over the bridge. This would allow more affordable and attainable housing to those that are working in our community. And this is a new way to look at expanding available resources for housing.
Thank you.
The purpose of this article is to create another housing option for landowners, expand our housing types, and create a pathway for more affordable housing that is suitable for our community. There are two types of development that's being proposed in this bylaw. The first is for adaptive reuse, which means taking an existing building in our community and changing that use into residential. The second type of development that could be created would be that of smaller pocket neighborhoods, smaller lot sizes and smaller homes. 25% of all units created must be sold, maintained, or rented at affordable prices. Each type of development proposal requires a special permit from the Planning Board, which includes a butter notification and a public hearing. For adaptive reuse, the Planning Board will determine the number of allowable units. For developments of four units or less, they may be serviced through a shared driveway. Anything over four units will require a subdivision plan. The density for a development like this is one unit per 10,000 square feet. So in our community, that's akin to the captain neighborhoods. Development is capped at 10 permits per year, and this provides a pathway to affordable housing through local controls. As was previously mentioned, we've had a lot of 40B applications come through our community. And the reason we have that is because we do not have strong affordable housing bylaws. But proposing something like this takes control back into our hands where we can help craft a development so that it's suitable for our community. Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Welcome. Remember to state your name and your address.
Connor Sullivan, Seven WoodSpring Farm Lane. I don't have much to say. I just want to speak out in support of this, this change. Because frankly, the town that I would want to live in is a town that I can afford to live in. I'm afraid that, I'm a, I'm a young professional myself. I have a full-time, full-time job, full-time employment at Heritage Museums and Gardens. And it is hard for me to speak about where the options are that I'd like to live when, with, with my coworkers, who are my age, who are in their twenties and thirties. And it is challenging for us because one of my coworkers has to live over an hour away. I'm lucky enough that I'm able to rent in town, and I am able to commute, just have a very short commute to my place of work. But I would really like to see the town and just, sorry, I'm just a little nervous. It's the first time I've ever done anything like this. But I'd like to see a place that reminds me of the place that I, that I grew up in. I grew up in Massachusetts. I grew up in Hingham, just a short ways away. And my experience of growing up was a town of vibrant neighborhoods, of children who were all over the place, of people who enjoyed their communities, who spoke with one another, who had connections that they were able to make with one another. And just the ability to be in a place that feels like a community, like a home. I've lived a lot of different places over the course of my life. And it, I just wanted to speak in support of this because I felt like, and obviously I did not have anything prepared. But I just, I, I think that when I look at this, the, the thing that jumps out to me the most is on item forty-four fifty-one. I'm sorry, again, I don't know exactly the, the table of contents, but a forty-four fifty-one, item two, maintaining a stable economy by preventing outmigration of residents who are an essential part of our community. And that's, there's all sorts of emotional arguments that I can make, and obviously I already have a little bit in support of this. But I think it's important that we keep in mind that all sorts of people live in this community, and that it takes a village, and that it takes all sorts of different people. And the more that housing prices go up, and the less affordable it is to live in a place, the less variety of people that we have in a place. And that we need all sorts of people to create a stable and, and joyful and, and just beautiful community. And again, sorry for just kind of tripping all over myself here, but thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mason Hickman of Coach Lane. I, I was actually just hoping someone from the Planning Board or Ms. Drake could inform us about the current percentage we are in reaching the safe harbor. The, like towards the 10% required, low, you know, affordable housing.
Yep, so the state of Massachusetts requires a subsidized housing inventory of 10% in order to be in safe harbor, which means you don't have to entertain comprehensive permits. We are currently in at around 4.3% of our housing stock being deemed restricted affordable. And that's rentals and year-round dwelling units. So we are low. With Wing School, we'll kind of come up around to about 6.5% with that development. And then we have two more 40Bs that are, that are pending and haven't started the next portion of their project. So even with all three of those and all those units being added, we would come up to about 8.5%. We would still be under our threshold of 10%.
Thank you. And the reason I ask that question is essentially, until we reach the safe harbor, we are still subject to 40B developments continuously. If you look at what's happened in some of our neighboring towns like Falmouth, there are lots of things just getting forced down their throats right now. I think this is a great initiative that the Planning Board has put forth to bring more of the power back, you know, to the town to be able to decide what these low-income areas or affordable housing is going to look like as opposed to allowing others to come in and force 40Bs down our throat. So strongly in support of this. Thank you for putting it together.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will open the voting. And again, this is a two-thirds majority to pass. And now the voting is open. There are 10 seconds remaining. Time is up. The article passes by the required two-thirds majority. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator, just as a point of clarification, I'm going to have to recuse myself from Article Six as I am directly impacted by this vote. So I'll be joining the audience as a regular voting member.
Thank you for letting me know.
Mr. Moderator, Article Six. Move that the town amend the town bylaws, Section Five Point One Five, Scenic Roads, by deleting the wording highlighted in strike-through and inserting the wording highlighted in bold as printed in the warrant under Article Six.
Second.
So the purpose of this amendment is to codify town enforcement actions on private roads as it relates to the scenic road bylaw. The proposed amendment is in line with how the bylaw has actually been interpreted and administered for years. There is a conflict in how it is written. It states that any roadway in Sandwich can become a scenic road, whether it's public or it's private. However, when we get a request for enforcement or someone files a violation of a scenic road act, we have to determine if the alleged violation was within the scenic road boundary, which is the right-of-way of a road. A right-of-way is defined by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation as a publicly-owned area. We only have one private road in the town that has been designated as scenic. The road was not created uniformly, and it is not easy to determine what the right-of-way is. But also, there is no publicly-owned right-of-way on a private road. The proposed amendment reduces town oversight on private property by eliminating private roads from the scenic road bylaw. Reading of this can be seen on pages eleven and twelve of your warrant.
Is there any discussion on the article? Please state your name and your address.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's John Louvatakas, Ocean Road East Sandwich. Not a lawyer, but as I read this article before it's changed, it doesn't seem to have any conflicts. So what you said in the back of the warrant is that it was to rectify conflict. So I'd like the attorney who wrote this to please tell me what the conflicts in the article are. Because as I read it, what it's done is it's giving you the ability to name any road scenic and then talk about the boundary, which is not, and the easement of the right-of-way, which is not just the driveway, but the tree belt where the trees and people have extended their property right up to the asphalt, which thereby gives you the ability to basically say, no, this is our property, even though people have been using it for 20 years or more, and take it back and put in bike paths or whatever it is that you want to do. So I would like clarification on this. And, and one more thing. I would like it in framework of what it is that you folks are trying to do long-term with Sandwich. Because as I read this, it feels like you're trying to make it a year-round community like our friends up in Orleans are trying to do. And so I'd like, that's my question. I'd like those addressed.
I'm happy to address some of those, some of those questions.
Are you the attorney? Excuse me.
I am not an attorney, no.
Okay, is the attorney here who wrote this?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. My firm serves as town council for the town of Sandwich. I believe the issue in, in presenting this article for consideration tonight is the fact that under the existing bylaw, there are ambiguities about what roads in Sandwich this applies to. And the intent of this bylaw is, a change is to make it clear that the bylaw will only apply to roads that are deemed rights-of-way under state law, and those are public ways, not private ways. So the effect of this would be to exclude private ways from the application of this bylaw, so it would apply only to public ways. And I believe, if I understand correctly, there's only one private way in Sandwich that's been deemed scenic. So it would have limited application. But the intent here is to make this consistent, internally consistent, and make it clear that it only applies to public ways or rights-of-way.
Well, that's my concern, sir, is that the public writes a way. You said that the way it reads is any way that the public uses. And all you have to do is determine that that's scenic, and then automatically you own or control the sides of that road because you can say that the boundaries are ambiguous, and then you can take down people's trees, people's, whatever, whatever's there. So again, I'll ask my same question. Does this, what right does this give you legally to do to that property? Because on the other committees that I've attended, there's this push for complete streets here in Sandwich and to make everywhere that's possible paths, mini-roads along the regular roads. And so this basically gives you that ability as I read it. Now, if I'm wrong, I'd like to, I'd like to be shown why. But it has nothing to do with private or public. Any road you can name to be scenic, and then it falls underneath this category. So my suggestion is, is that it's ambiguous to me. I don't see what you're saying. I think it should be rewritten, if that's what you want.
Bob, could you step up to the mic?
Bob King, Summer Street. I was just going to point out to this gentleman that I don't think he realizes that it's not town officials who designate a road as scenic. That's something we, as the members of Town Meeting, vote on and decide whether to designate a road scenic. And once it's designated scenic, the shoulder that's always and always will be the property of the state comes under the regulation of stone walls and trees that are growing on it. So in other words, if you go up, say Grove Street in Sandwich up to Heritage Museums and Gardens, that's a scenic road. And the trees that fall, or stone walls that fall within what's considered the roadway and is state property are regulated. So if you had, were installing a driveway or if you didn't realize that the sightlines coming out of your driveway were obscured by a tree and you wanted to have it removed, you could do that. But you have to go to the Planning Board and get permission to have it removed, or a stone wall. But does, it seems to me that your understanding is that somehow officials just can randomly decide a road is scenic, and that's not how it works. We have to come to Town Meeting and vote as to whether we, as, as town citizens, want to designate that road as scenic.
Okay, one thing that I would debate is that there's something in Massachusetts that says that you have a prescriptive easement if you've used somebody else's property for 20 years. That prescriptive easement is destroyed once the owner comes and says that, oh, no, I'm sorry that I haven't said anything for 20 years, but I want that property back. So what I'm concerned about is the use of the word right-of-way and the fact that you've said that the boundaries are ambiguous. The way it stands right now, especially along Route Six A, is that since 1974, nothing's changed. And so it's more than 20 years. So for you to say any road, the way it's stated here is you've taken out Route Six A and any road, and that means that you can basically go in and demand that there be change on the side of the road because you say that this is what you own as the town, not the state, but the town. That's how I read this. So the question is, what is the town trying to do with the roads? Are we trying to make complete streets here? Are we trying to make Sandwich look like every other city in Massachusetts or the United States? Are we trying to make it year-round as, as opposed to seasonal? That's what I don't understand. Because it seems like this guy, this is giving you some rights that I don't think people are really clear about.
So I understand you wanted to hear from the town's attorney, but I think Leanne over here from the Planning Board, or Leanne can help you out with this. I think she has a lot of information.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to go through the intent of what it is for proposing. So there's one street in Sandwich that's been designated as a scenic road. So the Scenic Road Act controls trees and stone walls within a right-of-way. So if you're on a scenic road and you want to cut down a tree or you want to disturb a stone wall, you have to apply to go before the Planning Board, have a public hearing, and publicly get permission to take down a tree or disturb a stone wall. And then there's usually a remedy to that whereby you plant 1.5 trees in addition to what you've taken down. When we go to the private portion of this road, which is Cranberry Trail, it's an old cart and horse path. That's what I mean when I say it was, it was un-uniform when it was started. It's not in any attempt to try and make that roadway a different type of roadway, but it's to clear up confusion of how we can enforce the scenic road bylaws on this portion of property that's private. So when it's a private road, the town does not have a publicly-owned easement or So, when it's a private road, the town does not have a publicly-owned easement or right-of-way on the shoulder of the road. It's still owned by those that live on the road. So, when someone cuts down a tree, which happened this, in the last several months, a resident cut down a tree, another resident came to the town and said, "I need you to enforce this bylaw." There's ambiguity in the bylaw, because we don't own the right-of-way on the private road. So, instead of disappointing everyone and saying, "We can't enforce the bylaw as it's written because of this," we thought it might be better to remove town enforcement action on trees and stone walls on private roads. And that's the purpose and intent of what's before you tonight.
Okay, I understand that, but maybe you should just say "for private roads," not for all roads.
It says, "Just on private roads."
Am I reading this wrong, folks? Okay, so the right-of-way is "any way that is used and maintained as a public way." So, it's public and private, is the way this reads.
The definition of a right-of-way is something that's publicly-owned.
I'm sorry?
We don't have a definition of right-of-way in our current bylaw, so we go to the Mass Department of Transportation.
Right.
And they define it as, a right-of-way is something that is publicly-owned. So, on a private road, there is nothing publicly-owned by the municipality.
Actually, what I read was the definition in Massachusetts of a right-of-way is an easement over somebody else's property, usually the town or the state, which is a driveway. That's an easement, that's the right-of-way, that's how it's defined. So, I haven't seen your definition. What I saw was that when we have a driveway, there is a tree belt or a certain amount of land that is from the asphalt out. For instance, on Route 6A, Mass Department of Transportation supposedly owns forty feet from the center line in both directions. If you've taken your house and you've brought it up to the asphalt, you are encroaching upon their land. And on that basis, they own that, and if they want to put a bike path, or whatever they want there, which is what you folks are talking about on 6A here in Sandwich...
Sir, you have exceeded your five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rob Millen, sixty-five Cranberry Trail. And if what I'm understanding is correct, this whole motion will only apply to Cranberry Trail in the private portion, correct? You see, Jeff?
Yes.
So, as the newly-appointed surveyor, as of April this year, I stand before you with a group of people from Cranberry Trail that have no issue with what the town's proposing. And we're the vast majority of Cranberry Trail.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Bob King, Summer, Bob King, Summer Street. Just to address the gentleman's concern, we also have setbacks in our zoning bylaws. So, nobody can build a house that's right up onto Route 6A or any others, any other street in town. It always has to be set back beyond the shoulder of the road.
Seeing no further discussion, I will open the voting. This is just a simple majority. Voting is closed. The article passes. Article seven.
Move that the town amend the town bylaws, section six-point-six-zero, signs by deleting the wording highlighted in strike-through and inserting the word highlighted in bold as printed in the warrant under Article seven.
Second. Leanne?
The purpose of this bylaw amendment is to better address our community business concerns, the overall appearance of our commercial corridors, clarify outdated language, and ensure that our regulations align with constitutional standards. The proposal moves from a content-based bylaw to a design-based bylaw. All sign types are codified in a very easy-to-read table. Sign sizes are larger where appropriate. The bylaw provides more flexibility and works to reduce sign clutter. Signs proposed within the historic district will continue to be permitted through the Historic District Committee. And a full reading of the proposed bylaw can be found on warrant pages twelve to twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
My name is Don Crichfield, three Boardwalk Road. Ten pages is a lot of the warrant for signs. Page fifteen, Part Three, Item One, "No person shall duplicate or replace a missing sign which..." Anyway, that sentence, without having obtained a new permit. Seems like that's an awful lot of bureaucracy if my sign gets blown down by a nor'easter. And I'm just wondering what the point of that is, if you've got a permit to have a sign, and you've got the sign, but it blows down, or somebody runs over it, why not just let them put it back up? Thank you.
Just to reference that, so that's not a change to the current bylaw. Currently, you would need a signed permit to erect a sign. If it was run over, or there was an incident where it fell down, it needed to be redone, you would currently still have to get another permit. I believe it's twenty-five dollars for a permit for a sign.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will open the voting. Again, this is a simple majority. Voting is open. Voting is closed. The article passes. Article eight.
Move that the town amend the town bylaws by adding a new Chapter Twelve, short-term rentals, by inserting the language printed in the warrant article, in the warrant under Article eight.
Second.
Leanne?
The purpose of this bylaw is to create a regulatory framework for the operation of short-term rentals within our town, and address necessary safety concerns. At annual town meeting in May, the previously proposed bylaw was indefinitely postponed in order to rework this language. The planning board discussed the best action that should be taken, and recommended to staff a two-pronged approach. First, create the regulatory framework that would govern the use, and secondly, undergo a robust community outreach process to learn more from residents about what type of regulations, if any, should be put on the use at a future town meeting, and then to codify that use in the short, in the zoning bylaws. So, what do we mean when we say "short-term rental"? A short-term rental is transient in nature, where at least one room or unit is being rented for a period of either two to thirty days. Some key points of this bylaw: trash removal shall occur weekly; any trash held on the property needs to be contained to deter animal activity; smoke and carbon dioxide detectors need to be code-compliant; no renting of campers, RVs, or tents. For violations, you may be subject to a fine, and for severe cases, a suspension of your certificate of registration. And I just want to stress that we do not list this use as allowable currently in any of our regulations, either in the town bylaws or the zoning bylaws. So, a positive vote from you all tonight would be a first step in making sure that property owners' rights to rent their property for under thirty days is maintained. A full reading of the proposed bylaw can be found in the warrant on pages twenty-three through twenty-six.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the article?
Hello, Josh Fitzmore is from Old Ford Road. Um, yeah, so I have a short-term rental in town, and I have an inspection coming up, but when I call to ask about what they're inspecting, or trying to prep for it, it was just, there's no checklist, there's not, at that time, so I was just wondering if there's been any updates to that, or what we're actually going to be required for, for the inspection.
So, that portion is derived from the State Building Code, whereby in January, it came through from the state that all short-term rentals in the Commonwealth had to be registered and inspected with their towns, and those are safety inspections. Now, the language that came from the state was also very ambiguous as to what code the inspectors were supposed to follow as they were inspecting. So, we've gotten more guidance recently, and we should be able to provide our residents with more information regarding what it is that we are looking for. As of this year, we've inspected close to three hundred rental properties. We've neither passed or failed them unless there was a glaring safety violation, and whereby someone's life would be at risk if they were to remain in the unit. But the purpose of that was to get more information from the state about exactly how it was they wanted to enforce these safety violations or safety codes within the building code, and then from there, you know, we would be able to work with our residents, so that we wouldn't be shutting down any uses, or, you know, shutting someone down in the middle of the season.
So, this is more like a trial run?
So, I would recommend calling the building department, yes. We're one of the first...
Yeah, and I talked to the building department, too, and they were just like, "Oh, yeah, we'll just kind of see what we see." But I just like to prep stuff, because I don't, I just want to be one-and-done, and they're like, "Oh, you'll have time to, like, fix anything you see." But I'm like, "I don't even know what you're looking for, besides smoke alarms." So, it was just like, kind of seemed like a rush process, where I think it should be something a little more, like, formal for whoever's running a short-term rental. It's just nice to have, like, a checklist that we can go through and be, like, more formalized, so we're not, like, penalized for stuff that we don't even know exists. That's just it.
Absolutely, and the more guidance and clarity we get from the state on the intent of this mandate, the better we're going to be able to inform you as to what it is we're looking for as we go through the inspection process.
Okay. And the other thing is, on the events, that's also a little vague, so it says, like, "No tents or no amplified music." I get the music, I don't really understand the thing about the tents, but it just seems weird that those are the only two kind of things about events. Is there any more clarification on, like, if someone's having, like, renting out your place? I have, like, a big kind of place, that, so if they want to have, like, a big dinner or something, a celebration for whatever, like, is there any more clarification on something like that?
Yeah, the intent of that regulation is really related to renting out your venue as, like, a wedding event venue, or a graduation ceremony venue, so that it gets away from being a short-term rental, which is primarily residential use, to then using a short-term rental as a mechanism to hold a wedding venue use, something that would be, you know, a little bit harder to live with in a residential neighborhood. So, I mean, one-off events are not something, nor does this take away anyone's ability to have a wedding at their home, a family wedding. That is not what we're referring to. But just, like, turning your residential property into a wedding venue is something that we're not trying to encourage.
All right, so that, I guess, is a good point. If someone rents out my place, and they decide it's for a graduation weekend, or whatever, like, I don't know if they're going to have a graduation party there. So, it's just a little vague, I don't, about that. And does that matter if they have people over for a graduation thing?
No, there's nothing that prohibits, you know, the amount of people on the property, or, you know, when we say amplified music, we have noise bylaws that are also in place, so if it gets to a certain decibel or a certain time of the night, you know, we're just trying to limit disruption to neighborhoods.
Okay. Yeah, it's just a little vague, and it's hard, hard to, like, understand what's good and what's not, because now there's fines and stuff involved, so it's like, we could be fined for something, but there's no actual kind of regulations that we know what we're getting fined for.
Filing is always the last, last resort. We do not make a, we do not try to fine our residents. You would have to hear from us multiple, multiple times, and have multiple conversations, and be completely non-responsive for us to go that route.
Okay. That just was in the bylaw, so it seemed like that was kind of like the first, second, third step, but that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Moderator.
I think, I think there was somebody who was coming up there to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I see, sorry. So, Mr. Moderator, this is Robbie Locke from Dexter Avenue. I guess, first off, I must address, I talked to someone at the building department two and a half, three months ago, probably, and actually, multiple times spoke with them, also received emails from them in response to, you know, my questions and things that she'd investigated. She was very helpful there, but I was given no indication that I should still go ahead and have an inspection for next summer. So, just, I mean, should I do that now, even though it's not anything that's been passed? I guess is the question. I was not aware of that.
This is a completely separate bylaw. So, what we're talking about when it comes to inspections and registration, that's a Massachusetts State Building Code requirement.
Right, right.
So, what's before you tonight is, is a step in allowing the use within the town of Sandwich. So, we're codifying some sample regulations to be voted on that would go into a bylaw, so that's one step in saying that, yes, we allow this use in the town of Sandwich, because we don't reference it anywhere. The second part of that, and what the planning board had requested of me, was to do a robust community outreach process through the winter into early spring, to find out from residents if there's any additional regulations we've missed that they would like, or they think it's over-regulated, and to reduce some, and then allow the use in the zoning bylaw also. So, they're kind of two separate things that are happening at once. I know all short-term, short-term rental property owners have been getting registered, have been getting their annual inspection, that's a state requirement, this is local, and it just, it helps us craft the use, craft the regulations associated with the use, and then if there's any out-of-hand cases of people abusing their properties, it gives us an enforcement mechanism that doesn't currently exist.
I guess I didn't differentiate that that inspection was actually coming from the state's side of it.
Correct.
I was never made clear of that, I was not aware of that. And then, secondly, is, can someone explain a little more as to why the inspection fee? Because I pay taxes for the property that I live in. I know, and I know, I understand, I'm not, you know, silly, that I recognize that it's an effort by the building department and all of that, but we're already paying, I'm already paying my annual taxes, and then I'm requiring tenants to pay additional taxes, which, of which the town benefits. So, can you explain why there would be this fee? I mean, shouldn't that be something that be a service provided by the town, given the taxes I just referred to, both on me and the tenants that I have that are staying with me, or staying there?
The fee associated is for staffing capacity to be able to conduct the inspections. We had to hire a part-time rental inspector to be able to conduct the inspections, to be compliant with the building code.
Okay. That's the obvious answer. Takes employment to do that, right? Take it from my existing taxes would be the suggestion. Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Yeah. My name's Gary Sullivan, I live at twenty-two Fieldstone Drive. I've been a resident of Sandwich for over forty years, and one of the things that drew us to Sandwich was the concept, you know, the nice neighborhoods in Sandwich. Neighborhoods are places where you have neighbors. Neighbors, you can't pick your neighbors, but you can pick a place that does have neighbors. And, you know, too many times, we have a short-term rental in our neighborhood, and we have called the cops many times for excessive noise. There's nothing in this bylaw that says they can't have two hundred people and fifty cars in the driveway and out on the streets, and we need to regulate this. The residents of Sandwich are more important, and short-term rentals are not residential, they're businesses. And I would like to, you know, when I look at the zoning bylaws, the definition of zones R1 and R2, I would like to propose an amendment that restricts dwellings to areas that are not zoned, R1... to areas that are not zoned R1 and R2. So I would like to propose such an amendment.
So that is beyond the scope of this, of this article.
How is that?
Can I, may I?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, um, you, you cannot make an amendment to amend the zoning bylaw because-
No, go ahead, sorry.
Well, I, I think that's in effect what, as I understood it, what your amendment would do, it would prohibit short-term rentals in cer- in certain districts, correct?
Is this part of the zoning bylaws?
No.
No, well, this is what I'm talking about amending. Not the zoning bylaws.
What amendment do you want to make to this article?
Okay, in the section that says ineligible units, I want to add, uh, dwellings in zones one, R1 and R2 are ineligible to be used as STRs.
No, I'm sorry, sir, that would in effect amend your zoning bylaw. Um, and there was no notice provided in the warrant, there was no planning board hearing or recommendation. If you want to propose a restriction on short-term rentals in your zoning bylaw, that will have to be a separate warrant article at a future town meeting.
Okay, I guess, alright.
Hi, Liam Mahoney, fifteenth Pleasant Street. Um, we recently, just this summer for the first time, did a few short-term rentals of our house. We did so in order to be able to continue to pay for fixing up a broken-down old but beautiful historic house in the center of Sandwich Village that we love and that we really hope we can continue to restore in this manner. Um, so, we actually passed the, this inspection just a couple of weeks ago, thank God, uh, and, but the inspector raised a point to us, and it's related to this point about smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, which I'm wondering how they apply to a historic home in which making all your smoke detectors and carbon monoxide contact, detectors code compliant would require rewiring the house in a way that is a major renovation that would actually hurt the historic interior of the house. Uh, so, at the moment, in the older part of the house, we have battery-run detectors, which are not code compliant as I understand, but are allowed in historic homes. My question is, to do short-term rentals is a more strict rule being applied that is therefore possibly gonna damage the historic value of the home, which is part of what Sandwich is proud of. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, perhaps our building commissioner could explain the smoke detector bylaw?
Please.
Or the code?
So, uh, the current code, uh, this, this bylaw would, uh, current code goes with pre-existing conditions, tha- therefore, uh, this bylaw would give us more safety. You're inviting people into a home to be rented, there's been some pretty, uh, well-documented tragedies in this area, and I believe this bylaw brings that safety, uh, into place for the, uh, the inspections of these short-term rentals. It's, it, it take, close the loop from someone living in their house that knows where the sm- the smoke detectors, what conditions they're in, whereas if someone's staying there, they have a code-compliant smoke detector, CO, that they're, it, it, it's life safety.
Just as a follow to that, so just for somebody that has a historic home, and are they being required to rewire their home to current code?
Well, that's the, the currently, through the building code, they're not, but this would, would create that, and I think it's a vitally fight, uh, life safety issue.
Leah Dager, one oh eight Dillingham Avenue. I just wanted to point out to the, to the moderator that in addition to some short-term rentals being businesses, for some residents, it's part of their income for the year. And um, at the May meeting, we had many residents stand up and say that this was part of their income, that they rented out their house, and so I think it's important for people just to recognize that it can be both your neighbor and a short-term rental all at the same time.
Thank you. I think there's somebody coming.
My name is Paul Gannett, I live at Ten Magnuson Court, so, um, I just kinda wanted to follow up on the earlier proposal for the amendment relative to excluding, uh, short-term rentals from, uh, certain, uh, zones. It's my understanding, or I guess what my, what I'm proposing is that there's this follow-on phase that Leanne Drake was talking about where more discussion will happen, and it seems like part of that discussion could be that different zones, you know, have, you know, different restrictions. You, we have the different zones for, uh, R1 and R2 residential zones specifically to establish those as more residential areas. We have other zones for the, the shore zone and the marine zone, which can have different restrictions, and you know, and I think we'll all admit that those different parts of the town have a very different character and can therefore have, uh, different restrictions that are appropriate. Will, will this, can we have this zoning discussion or the different zones as part of that, that, uh, follow-on analysis?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so as part of that, as we look at regulations, we can also look at what parts of town, you know, if there's a cap in a certain area of how many, if it's blanket not allowed in one of the zones, what that looks like. We can also go into ownership, other communities have outlawed fractional ownerships to make sure that it's their first, second, third homeowners that have them, and it's not corporations. Um, there's a lot of things and restrictions that you can do. Uh, one of the things we have to do is to allow the use within zoning, so as part of that process, I'll be presenting again at a future town meeting, and we can talk about, you know, that, what we present that night, whether it's, you know, a blanket allowed in every district, whether it's only in certain districts, you know, what that looks like, but that, that's a robust process that we will start this winter. Um, we'll start doing it through, um, online surveys that you can pick up also at the town hall, but we'll make sure that we advertise that so that our residents know what, what information and input that we're trying to receive.
Alright, thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator?
Jay.
Um, Leanne, I hate to make you the most outspoken person this evening, but just one more question is, um, what if, if a, if a vote of no on this does occur, what does that mean for the short-term rentals in the town of Sandwich?
So it means that we have no regulatory framework in place, and it also means that we have no zoning bylaw allowing the use. So the first step tonight was to create the regulatory framework in the town bylaws, go through this process with the public, and then present again to allow the use within zoning. We're leaving ourselves up to liability, um, if there's an issue. We've seen it in our neighboring communities whereby the town has been sued for short-term rental usage, where they felt it wasn't allowed, it's extensive legal costs associated with it. Um, a lot of our residents use this to be able to pay their taxes, to remain in place. We have just over five hundred short-term rentals in our community, less than ten of them are owned by corporations, most in our community are owned by first and second residents.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Annette DiMarzio, Freeman Ave. How does, if, if you have a, uh, residence or building that you are renting to the same tenant for more than eighty percent of the year, but maybe a month or a month and a half you have, I guess, short-term rentals, how, does this apply to that type of residence?
So if you rent your property for between two and thirty days for more than fourteen days at a time, it qualifies as a short-term rental. So for two weeks out of the year, you rent it for between two and thirty days, it would qualify as a short-term rental.
Good evening, Mason Hickman, Coach Lane. I, I just wanted a clarification from the building department. So this new requirement is going to, it's going to be additional, not just what we typically see in a residential real estate transaction like a twenty-six F certificate. This is going to require further modification of any houses that don't meet the current standard, which is a wired smoke detector in every bedroom, is that?
This would require that the current, the smokes and COs and, and heat detectors would be brought up to current code.
Just for clarity, so that in, that is over and above the requirements of a standard transaction similar to receiving a twenty-six F certificate, like what most people see when you transfer real estate?
Real estate transfers would be different, this is building code standards, so that would be through the fire department, that'd be different than, than either of these real estate transactions.
So I guess any, any property owned or that was, um, hasn't been substantially modified since prior to nineteen seventy, or therefore, that has either, uh, electri- not wa- non-wired or they just have hallway smoke detectors, they're no longer going to be compliant, they cannot rent out their properties as short-term rentals under this, under this amendment without rewiring to the current code.
They would have to meet the current code with smokes and COs and a life safety issue.
Okay, so I just want to get that clarity. Uh, for all these folks, I, I do have a short-term rental, a full disclosure, uh, but for all these, you know, folks that are using this as a way to, um, you know, subsidize their living or paying for their, their houses, I think this is gonna be a much bigger impact than anybody realizes just by that one line, uh, requiring it. The, the gentleman from fifteen Pleasant Street mentioned it, uh, you know, earlier as something that came up. I think, I just wanted to really put a, put an exclamation point on it so that people realize, uh, the type of financial impact it's really gonna have, so.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to make a clarification, and I would ask the building inspector to correct me if I, if I'm wrong, but the requirements for smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors are all part of the state building code. Those apply whether you pass this bylaw or not. It's a state mandated requirement.
Yes, but that all depends on when a property was built and when this, when it was substantially renovated, is that correct?
Currently, it, it go, that would be correct, yeah.
So, but I would just point out that in section three, it says, "All smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors shall be in compliance with Massachusetts State Building Code, seven eighty CMR, tenth edition." So that's the requirement, it's being recited in this bylaw, but if you, um, if that provision doesn't apply to your particular circumstance, that is the, the provision of the state building code, then this bylaw does not require anything more than what is already applicable to a property under the state building code.
Then, I think we need clarification on that then. So the gentleman with the home on fifteen Pleasant Street, does he need new smoke detectors that are wired, hardwired?
If he's going to use it for short-term rental, he would have to bring it up to current building code standards.
Okay. So then, I-
Would he do that to himself?
No, no, he would not, because under a twenty, when you get a twenty-six F certificate from the fire department in town, it does not mean it needs to meet current building code. There, there, ki- would you, would you like to speak to the timing of?
So the, the current building code requirement for this inspection of short-term rentals is precondi- uh, pre-existing conditions would stay in place. This would, uh, make the requirement that all smoke, COs, and, uh, heat detectors would be brought up to current code. So that's the difference.
Right, so for, for full exclamation point here, everyone who has these properties that don't meet current code, which is a wired smoke detector in every room, would need to bring them up. So I just want everyone in this room who has a short-term rental or might be thinking about the neighbor who has one, that is going to be a serious financial impact.
Mr. Moderator, just as a, Ian, is this, this upgrading on this, is this a state requirement, or is this a local bylaw requirement as being proposed?
This would be a local bylaw requirement.
So we are more restrictive than the state on this.
If you're gonna speak, please come to the podium.
Josh, again, uh, Old Ford Road, Josh Fitzmaurice. No, I was wondering if you, you can push for amendment for something like that, because I also have a historic home that was built in eighteen eighty, so basically, for, we get the, in the real estate transaction, we were up to code because pre-nineteen seventy, you need smokes and carbon outside, in hallways, outside the bedrooms and such like that. So we were compliant on this, but now the, the technology has also changed a lot, because I'm all for having as much safety as possible. So now they have interconnected ten-year battery, um, smokes. So, and my friend that was in Mashpee, um, he, he went back and forth with the fire department and building inspector, and they finally allowed him with these new technology, but I don't see why something like that, they're interconnected and they're ten-year battery, and they work through whatever, Bluetooth or Wi-Fi, and when one goes off, the whole system goes off. So something like that seems like a much better option than trying to make people rewire their whole house when it's built historic times. Trying to rewire that would be an absolute nightmare. So I, I don't know if there's a way to propose an amendment to either remove or amend that portion of the bylaw. Especially if it's local bylaw, not a state requirement.
Just gonna take a brief, okay, we'll take a brief recess here. Can we take a brief recess here? Was there a specific amendment that you wanted to make?
Maybe on Section 12.5. So, which specifically is talking about meeting the current building code? So, I see in Section 12.5 on 7, it says, "Including but not limited to building and fire codes, health codes, water supply." Is that the exact section we're talking about?
So, that's the standard section. It would be 12.05, general provisions 3.
3, okay. So, I would motion to amend that in compliance with state building and fire codes, not based on when the house was built. Or to strike it altogether. According to state code. Yeah, exactly. So, what I said at first, it's already covered in 7, so we should move to strike that altogether.
And so, we have a motion. Do we have a second on the amendment? Okay?
Sir?
Yeah, so that should cover it.
Sir, can I, just for the record, can I read your proposed amendment back to you, just so we're on the same page? You're making amendment to strike the following from Article 8, which is the Section 3, which is referenced, where it says, "All smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors shall be in compliance with Massachusetts State Building Code 780 CMR 10th Edition." Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the amendment? Sir?
Liam Mahoney, again, 15 Pleasant Street. Because Point 7 in the same point also refers to meeting all these codes, I don't think that this amendment would be sufficient unless there's some explicit statement of variance for houses built before a certain time, because the building code is what it is, but when the house my age is inspected, right? They allow certain things because they're pre-existing, because of the age of the house. Certain things are allowed to not meet those state codes because of the age of the house. So, unless there's something that refers to an exception for the age of the house, I think there would still be an ambiguity in which for the building inspector, they could still say, "No, you don't have... Your fire alarms don't meet code." And the point we have right now is, I would love my fire alarms to meet code, right? But I can't rip apart the entire interior of my house. Thank you.
So, we're currently debating the amendment. Please state your name and your address.
Arvin Wilson, 12 Powderhorn Way. I also think this amendment isn't going to do what people want it to do. I believe that an amendment that added a provision for variance with recommendation of the fire chief and the building commissioner, perhaps granted by the Board of Selectmen, based on the age of the building and financial need, and making sure that the alternative met life safety requirements that were necessary, would probably do the job better. And once this amendment is disposed of, I would be willing to make such an amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I just be able to address a few of the comments?
Yes, please.
So, in deleting that section, so that would, in fact, delete the requirement to bring your smoke and COs and heat detectors up to current code. The current code does not prescribe that this happens. This is an additional safety life measure that we put forward due to the deaths in New England as it relates to failing smoke and COs that happened in the past two years. So, this was a local regulation. By striking that and keeping 7, which says has to meet all state-local building and fire codes, those codes don't mandate that your smokes be brought up to current use unless you're adding a bedroom, or there's a change of use or something in addition. So, that would satisfy this. But also, within the building code, and Ian can probably speak more intelligently about it than I can, there is a provision that is ambiguous, that if the building official at any point feels that a use is detrimental and it's a safety hazard, they can require something, and it's just a blanket statement. So, having that process go through the select board would take away the rights of the building commissioner, which are given to him through the state of Massachusetts. So, it would conflict to be able to add something like that. But I think what we're hearing tonight and what's intended, the amendment of striking this, would fix the concerns that were raised tonight.
Yes, John Lou Vutakis, Ocean Road. From what I'm hearing, perhaps I'd like to make a motion that we indefinitely postpone this... The vote on this. Because the reason is, is that I agree with the guy who wants more provisions regarding the number of people that can be there, and how we're going to basically make sure that the neighborhood stays calm and safe.
So, we're currently debating the amendments, so we need to...
Yeah, but can I make an indefinitely postpone motion? It has to be seconded, of course, so...
So, you could make that motion, as long as there's a second. Okay? And it is debatable, so is there any discussion on indefinitely postponing?
Josh, again. As the planning board has said, it seems something needs to pass to give at least a framework to start, and I know there is much more discussion ahead. You said, "Next year"?
Yeah, we'll be starting our community outreach this winter, so coming into December and January months. So, the purpose of doing this was, we need to codify some type of regulation on the use. If the use gets called into court, or we get sued over the use, that may take the use away from every person in this town that has a short-term rental currently. So, it's really a direction from the community right now. Do you want this use to continue within your community? If you do, and you want to protect your use and protect your right to rent your property for this purpose, this is the first step to do that.
Thank you for the clarification. Yeah, so it seems like a framework, at least something needs to be put into place to even almost allow short-term rental.
Excuse me, Walter Fagnetti Sandwich. You can't make a motion to indefinitely postpone when you're discussing a motion to amend.
We actually can.
I thought you can only discuss the motion.
The motion to indefinitely postpone takes precedent.
The motion to indefinitely postpone would postpone the amendment, not the whole article.
No.
Mr. Moderator, regardless of what subsidiary motions are on the floor, right now you have a main motion and you have a motion to amend. A motion to indefinitely postpone takes precedence over those pending... Those other pending motions, and if it passes, we'll be done with this article. If it fails, then we will go back to the main motion, but first we would vote on the amendment.
Robbie Locke, again, Dexter Avenue. If or when, assuming that this amendment or this article comes back, I would really like to understand and qualify a couple of the... I don't want to call them ultimatums in your argument, and no disrespect, but hearing about, you know, these astronomical occurrences of death and whatever else that has been described two different ways, twice now by you, I don't think that serves the people in the public that are interested in trying to still respect and control and have control and ensure safety of all of our tenants. That should be a given. But in light of that, we shouldn't be said, "Well, this is going to go away, and we're not going to be able to allow rentals from this day forward." That was the one ultimatum, and the other one is, you know, this... You keep referring to some event that occurred, and I'm sure it was a horrific event. I'm sure all of us would agree that any loss of life obviously would be something you want to guard as much as you can against. But let's see some statistics and facts around the percentage of people renting in short-term rentals, and any types of occurrences like that, and what leads to those types of incidents, please, okay? That's all I would ask. Because we don't want to be held captive to some nebulous risk potential of something occurring. And I say that also because I have a million-dollar policy on my home for exactly... Not to obviously stop a death from happening, but to cover things. And I'm sure other people here, if they're following their insurance advisor's advice, they're doing the same thing, all right? So, I would just like to see and understand what are the risks that we're weighing if we go into, you know, extra additional protection beyond what the state requires and things, okay? Thank you, thank you.
Bob King, Summer Street. I would just like to speak to the idea of not indefinitely postponing this article. We did this at the last town meeting, and I think it's... We need to get the job done. The only issue that we got to remember that people with short-term rentals had was about the smoke detectors, and that's been fixed. So, I would strongly advise that we not indefinitely postpone this article, and that we vote in favor of it, so that those people who have short-term rentals can be legal and begin the process of developing a set of rules and regulations that everybody in town would like to see governing short-term rentals. And just for the record, I don't have a short-term rental, so I have no personal interest in this. But I think, let's get this done tonight. We've already postponed it once already. We've fixed the one issue people had, and I think it's ready to be passed. Thank you.
Bud, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that, you know, several public officials have worked a really long time on this, tried to take the input that we received last May, tried to balance things, and when our offices get calls during the week, when, you know, a butler is complaining about a short-term rental use where there's unfettered ability to rent out every night, no restrictions that are laid out here, like I think it would be very wise for the town to not indefinitely postpone this, to put something in place, come back with some of the regulations next May or when the planning board's ready. And I think it's really important to keep pointing out the whole reason that the smoke detectors and the proper means of egress was adopted by the state because of issues that happened, and they're trying to protect the public. So, I would just say, similar to what Mr. King said, if we kick this can down the road again, you know, we get a lot of calls of people complaining about what's happening in their neighborhoods. There's no way to protect yourself. So, I think it'd be really important to act on this, either up or down, but to try to, you know, move this forward.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Sampson? So, we're taking discussion on the motion to amend? No, we're taking... We never voted on the motion to amend. But there was a motion and a second to indefinitely postpone. So, we're taking the motion and definitely postpone. All right, I'll hold then. So, unless there is further discussion, we do have a motion and a second to indefinitely postpone, and we will take a vote on that.
Mr. Moderator, just as a point, or Taylor, could you just explain what a yes and no vote is for everybody, so that they know what they're voting for, whether it's to... A yes is to indefinitely postpone, and a no is to continue on to vote on the amendment.
So, yeah, a yes would indefinitely postpone the article. A no would... The indefinitely postponement would fail, and then we'd go back to arguing the amendment and taking a vote on that, up or down, and then we'd go back to the main motion as amended, if that is what happens. So, I will open the voting now, or momentarily. It's open. 10 seconds. Voting is closed. The motion fails. Now, we will continue debating on the amendments. Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Moderator? So, the motion to amend is to strike the section requiring smoke detectors? Correct. So, I just want to talk about this briefly. So, this is an interesting one, especially an amendment to delete the entire requirement for smoke detectors. So, the amendment is to, if it's pre-existing, to leave it alone, versus bring it up to the current state building code. Thinking about doing this, right? We know that a Dennis police officer lost his wife and child staying at a short-term rental with smoke detectors that were not working properly. That's a fact. That's something that actually happened. When you go stay at a hotel or some commercial property, that property meets commercial building code requirements for exits, signs, alarms, emergency lighting, all of these things. So, short-term rentals, we're talking about folks staying at a residence, and the concern here is regarding the historic properties, which I appreciate folks being concerned about the challenges of wiring smoke alarms into historic properties for a variety of reasons. But I'd actually argue that those properties are likely the properties that require smoke detectors more than other properties. Those historic properties are likely the properties that are more challenging to exit if an emergency did happen. Folks are staying in these properties. They're properties they are not familiar with. Historic properties come with a very wide set of variables, as many of us are aware of. And I actually think that meeting the current building code requirements from a safety perspective and a life safety perspective, it makes sense. It may not make sense from a financial perspective for the property owner, and I understand that, but from a life safety perspective, I'm not sure how you argue against it. Mr. Finn?
Right, if I may.
Jonathan Finn, Chipman Road. Like to make a motion that we move the question.
We have a motion and a second? So, just to clarify, was that just moving the amendment? The question on the amendment, the amended question? Well, you could move the question that's on the floor. There's only one question on the floor, that's the amendment. Yeah, we're currently on the amendment, so if we're looking to move the amendment, that's what we'll do. So, everybody had time to read that? So, we had a motion and a second. And there's no further debate. We will vote on the amendment. Seeing none, I will open the voting. 10 seconds.
Mr. Moderator, do we...
Voting is closed.
Voting is closed.
Before this is tallied, do we have to make, don't we have to vote to actually move the question, or is that just a proposal in a second, and then it goes to move the question? Because I think that it was, the vote was to move the question first.
You're right.
We just never voted is the problem.
The voting is closed.
Mr. Moderator, point of order. The language up there says Article Eight. It should indicate 12.05.
No, doesn't need to.
I think that was the intent of the person that moved it.
It is my understanding and that the intent was clear, but the amendment did fail. So that brings us back to the original article as originally presented. Please state your name and address.
Steve Bar, 29 Craft Road, Forest Hill. This whole amendment here is...
The, the amendment has failed, we're no longer on the amendment. We're on the main, we're on the main question.
This whole, this whole, uh...
Article, article.
Article Eight.
Okay.
I have a problem with Article Eight. Why would it only apply to short-term rentals? Why not long-term rentals? Couple of years ago, the guy who owned the house behind me moved. He had a big mortgage, so he rented to a bunch of people that were not totally desirable. Cost me a few hundred dollars replacing, replacing glass in my windows and, and doors as the tenants, long-term rental, started shooting BB guns and breaking my windows. It's not just an end, I'm not sure he ever got an inspection. Long-term rentals don't count? What about all these people? We voted for extended ADUs. What about all these people who are gonna put in ADUs and rent the ADUs? Why aren't those covered?
Do we have any further discussion on the main article?
Mr. Moderator?
Uh, Mr. George.
This whole thing about smoke detectors. I spent forty-eight years in the fire department here in town. I saw some pretty bad stuff. People died, okay? I own Sandwich Security, the company here in town. I do fire and burglar alarms. I've heard about the old house trying to run, run some wires in it. Today, they have wireless smoke detectors, I put 'em in. Whole systems, you can put 'em right in, not have to run any wires at all. So that, it's really not an issue, but, uh, there's a lot of lives been lost, and to battle over some smoke detectors, it just doesn't make sense. There's a way around it, wireless, put it in, it can be monitored, everything. So recommend that you do vote this in. Thank you.
Name and address.
Eileen Stars, Mashview Circle. Mr. Moderator, I'm wondering, in the interest of trying to get this passed, but to try to help those that would have excessive expenses to be able to be rewiring their homes and so forth, could it be that we strike that language but also include that the homes that are rented that do not have the wired detectors, the renters would have to disclose that information, the landlord would need to disclose that information to the renters? So that way, it would be up to the renter to decide whether they wanted to take the risk of renting a home.
Mr. Moderator, it is a, and I've given this speech many times at many town meetings, with all due respect to the speaker, I think it's very dangerous to try to rewrite a bylaw on town meeting floor because of the law of unintended consequences. So my suggestion would be continue to debate Article Eight, vote on it, and it can be amended in the future through the proper process. It can be amended by a citizen's petition for this, the 2026 annual town meeting. There can be some deliberate thought, review by the public safety officials, et cetera, but I really would discourage you from trying to make that kind of an amendment on the floor of town meeting.
But the other amendment was already entertained and voted on?
That amendment was a very simple striking, it's no longer up there, but it's striking that one section three. Very simple, very clean.
Well, this would be just striking the language and then adding...
Well, I'm just, I, I'm not gonna tell you not to make your motion to amend, but you have to put it in writing, and I just don't recommend it. It, it's fraught with peril, in my opinion.
Okay.
Please state your name and address.
Arlene Wilson, 12 Powderhorn Way. I propose an amendment by adding section, paragraph eight to section 12.05 of Article Eight to read. A variance may be granted by the Board of Selectmen with the advice of the Fire Chief and the Building Commissioner for historic properties based on financial hardship so long as, I can't even read my own writing, so long as alternative and suitable life safety requirements are provided.
So I'm ruling that that is not inside the scope of the bylaw. It's outside the scope.
Sean, if I may, just, I, I don't think I've ever been to one of these town meetings where we've gotten so far into the weeds that, you know, we're having a difficult time seeing our way out. When we proposed this amendment a year ago, this was to comply with state law that's already in place to allow short-term rentals. If I may, I would make the suggestion that we perhaps, if somebody wants to, you know, move forward on this, that we vote and we have our annual town meeting in May, where if somebody wants to make an amendment to this law in the May meeting, I believe that it would still be able to be enacted for the upcoming rental season of next summer, which I would defer to town council if we voted that in in May, if it would still be enacted for the upcoming season. But the, the spirit of this is to get something on the books that allows us to have enforcement in place, it allows short-term rentals, it gets the law in place, it gets us, you know, compliant so that there are short-term rentals which do feed the local economy as well as offset your, you know, property taxes through, you know, local revenues that are generated. So just to ask everybody, take a minute and really think about that before you proceed with either, you know, postponing or amending this. To town attorney's recommendation that making these motions now from the floor makes things difficult and that we can do something that can't be undone. So thank you.
Please state your name.
Josh, 200 Ford Road. So basically, I think this is all becoming misconstrued of what we're trying to do here. Literally, I, I wanna put a smoke alarm in every bedroom, I have a historic home, and I wanna do exactly what he is talking about. They have wireless smoke alarms that all interconnect. I wanna be as safe as possible, I wanna put them wherever they're needed based on the code, but the problem, the actual problem here is with this code, I was told you cannot use the exact wireless smoke alarms you're talking about. So I'm fully support fire alarms everywhere they're required by the new code. I think it's just becoming misconstrued, especially, I also know about the story about what happened at a short-term rental, that, that was also due to that wood stove that wasn't working properly, and they left, they were outside and left the stove. But anyways, we want smoke detectors, we just wanna use the current technology that he said he installs all the time, but with this code, it doesn't allow that. It's, it says everything needs to be hardwired. So I think we just got off topic that we don't want like smoke detectors or something like that. We, we wanna be as safe as possible.
Thank you.
All right, if, you know, something, if I may...
George.
Mr. Holden.
I think it's beneficial to be in compliance with the Massachusetts State Building Code. Our priority here is to protect the occupants, period.
Please state your name.
Liam Mahoney, 15 Plaza Street. My priority is to protect the occupants as well. It is a little obnoxious, this idea that if you have an old house, you're being accused of not caring about the people you rented to. But actually, safety is very important, and I, every time that this, in building inspection team has come to my house, I have been very happy, because I know that their job is to make me safe, okay? But the challenge here is that when a house is of a certain age, to make it compliant with hardwired things means rewiring the interior of a house, which is a complete renovation. So my question, and it's again to, more to the building inspectors, is whether a renovation of your wiring system can be done in a, in an entirely piecemeal fashion, which is to say, if I do magically figure out a way to hardwire my smoke detectors behind my plaster walls and my ceilings that look so beautiful, is an electrical inspector gonna come in and say, well, no, because if you're gonna start a renovation in your downstairs, you have to hardwire all the electrical work in your heart stairs, in your downstairs, which would be nearly impossible? Or can I just figure out the solution for my smoke detectors? Thank you. No, wireless is against code, I'm not even asking that, they can't change state code. I'm just asking if I figure out wiring for smoke alarms, am I gonna be surprised by an electrical inspector who comes in and says, well, once you start renovating that far, we can only pass inspection if you fix all your wiring?
Is there any, oh, please?
Just to try and answer that, hypothetical, if everything's different and every project is different, so it's very difficult to answer a question like that.
Do we have any further discussion on the main article?
John Louvatakis, Ocean Road. I just like some clarification. This gentleman said, code says they have to be hardwired. This gentleman says he's been putting them in that are Wi-Fi, and that's supposedly according to code. So can you clarify, is he according to code, or is he according to code? Because if you can put in the Wi-Fi, I think you solved this gentleman's problem and everybody else's, because they wanna protect the people. But if you're saying it has to be hardwired, and he's saying it doesn't have to be hardwired, and he's the ex-fire chief, I'm confused.
It's like the building department to speak.
So there, there is numerous ways to meet the current code, the, the attempted edition, so there's different options, different ways to do it. So it, it's all about how you present it and how you meet that code. There is a different monitored system, you can include some wireless systems in it. Can't get into specifics like that, it's a very difficult question.
If you, please, please address town meeting if you're speaking. Sir? Patrick, you, you wanted to speak.
Well, like this gentleman, I just wanted to resolve the difference between Mr. George's opinion and the building inspector's opinion relative to the use of, of wireless smokes.
So there's, there's different ways to, to meet the code, and the code, the way the article is written is that it's to meet the building code. So whatever's presented, then I could review for code, but it's, it's a hypothetical, if you can get down, it's just too many answers to the same question.
Well, all right, so I'll put my, so for everybody here, I'll, I'm a general contractor by day, selectmen by night, so I'll put my builder hat on for a minute. So what the building commissioners and inspectors having a difficult time answering a hypothetical is that everybody's house is wired differently. There's extremely old wiring that would not meet the code when you go to do an upgrade in a house, as far as the breaker panel being too old to be upgraded to arc fault breakers, throw switches on the outside of the house would be, have to be installed. When you upgrade the electrical system in a house, and you put arc fault breakers in, there's wiring in the house that would not be compatible with arc fault breakers, which are their current code. So it, it really depends on the type of wiring, the type of system that's currently in the house. Somebody's house that's from the eighteen hundreds that was wired in the seventies might be fine to add wired smoke detectors. Somebody's house that's from the, the forties or thirties that has, you know, old, you know, ungrounded circuits in the house would not be able to be upgraded, and it goes on a case-by-case basis of what's in the house. There's not a blanket statement as to whether this system or that system would apply, it would go to the individual home and how it was wired at the last time that the house was upgraded. So it's a difficult to make a blanket statement as to each house, you know, whether it would be wireless or wired. The question really has become, are local, as the bylaw is written, would require the upgrade to current code? The article that failed was to go by state code. So what the question that we have before us is really whether or not to go with the current bylaw that's before us with the upgrade, or in an amendment that would come in.
Very good. Sir, state your name.
Yes, Richard Nice, Piccadilly Road. Like to make a motion to move the question.
Second.
So that is not debatable, and that will take a two-thirds majority to move the question?
Just for clarification, we're voting just to move the question?
Just to move the question. And then the next, so we'll move the question, say that if that passes, then, then we take the vote on the main article, Article Eight. Please come to the...
I, I think it's a real shame that this whole thing has been so screwed up with, you know, with, we voted on an amendment, we voted to, you know, to indefinitely postpone, we voted to, you know, to re, I think, I just want clarity. So right now, what we are voting on is the, the amendment or the article?
We, so we are on...
I'm sorry, we're voting on the motion to...
To move the main article.
Move the article.
Great.
Yes or no?
So a yes vote would move us to the question, and we would then vote on the main article. The amendment failed, we already voted on it, it's over. We had a motion and a second. So we're voting to move it, yes or no, yea or nay? So I am opening the voting. Voting is closed. Two-thirds majority passes. Now we move on to Article Eight as presented in your warrant. So there is no debate. We're going to move, we're going to vote on Article Eight.
No comments?
Voting is closed. Article Eight passes.
Move that the town accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Ninety, Subsection Eighteen B, granting the Board of Selectmen the authority to consider designating safety zone areas in the interest of public safety and without further authority, as may be further defined by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation.
Is there any discussion?
Carl Ajades, sixty-one Wood Avenue. I am with the Town Neck Speed Limits for Safety Committee. This particular article, uh, came out of our committee in Town Neck to try to establish a safety zone within the Town Neck neighborhood. And per the Mass. DOT regulations, a safety zone must be adjacent to a land use that attracts vulnerable road users. A vulnerable road user is defined as a person that's not in a car. They're a person that's walking, riding a bike, getting from A to B. Now, in Town Neck, we're, we have many, uh, local land uses that require people to walk to. We walk down to Town Neck Beach. We walk down to the boardwalk. We walk down to the Pilot House, Seafood Sands, the canal area, and of course, our favorite place, Treehouse. Have to go, have to mention that. So what we're proposing with this particular article is to draft and get established a safety zone within Town Neck. This would reduce the speed limits in that area from the current thirty miles an hour, which is really kind of insane, but that's set by the Mass. DOT, not by the Town of Sandwich, down to twenty miles an hour. Further to that, there's signage that'll be installed within a neighborhood that would address it as a safety zone to bring education into this plan. Because as currently stands, there are no speed limits, not one, within the Town Neck main neighborhood. So we are definitely in favor of passing this particular article. The article is not only for, for Town Neck, it's for any area within the Town of Sandwich that meets the criteria. So we are looking for a yes vote on Article Nine. And I also would like to thank the Select Board for putting this article up on the, on the warrant for, for tonight's consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that this article actually accepts a provision of the Mass. General Laws that would give the Select Board the authority to consider these designations. It doesn't require them to. It doesn't identify a certain subdivision. Those would have, all have to be individual decisions made by the Board. I just don't want to imply that if something passes tonight, it's happening in certain areas, but not others.
Mr. Moderator, Sean Palé, 176 Route Six A. I'm also chairman of the Sandwich Bikeways and Pedestrian Committee. Uh, our committee heard from the Town Neck Safety Committee back in June and agreed unanimously to support such an endeavor.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I'm at Damasio Freeman Ave. Could you explain the difference between Article Nine and Article Ten?
Um, Article Nine is a designation for a safety zone, so it's more defined, um, by state law and the regulations that the Mass. Department of Transportation adopts. Uh, and that relates to a twenty mile per hour, twenty mile per hour designation. Article Ten relates to a thickly settled area. Um, so that's a different provision of the general laws, which is why they're two separate votes. And that one, if it got approved in certain areas, uh, would include a twenty-five mile per hour designation.
Seeing no further discussion, I will open up the voting in just a minute. We will, uh, we'll keep it open until you get a fresh clicker, okay? All right. We are closing the vote. The article passes. Article Ten. Mr. Sampson.
Move that the town accept provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Ninety, Section Seventeen C, granting the Board of Selectmen the authority to consider designating thickly settled areas in the interest of public safety and without further authority, as may be further defined by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation.
Do we have any discussion on the article? Seeing none, we will take it to a vote. There are ten seconds remaining. Voting is closed. The article passes. Article Eleven.
Move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain, permanent and/or temporary easements for public way purposes, including without limitation for the construction, installation, maintenance, improvement, repair, replacement and/or relocation of rights of way, sidewalks, walkways, driveways, drainage, slopes, grading, rounding, landscaping, and other appurtenances and/or facilities to enable the town to undertake the Cotuit Road and Quaker Meeting House Road roadway improvements project and for any and all purposes incidental or related thereto as printed in the warrant under Article Eleven.
Second.
Mr. Johansson.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I have one question. We know that Cotuit Road and One Thirty are the two most problematic roads we have here in Sandwich. And my question goes to, the crosswalks that exist there now, will they be made up to complete total safe codes with the right signage and the whole, the whole nine yards it goes along with improving the roads from what it is today so that both roads can be a little safer? Is this going to cover that particular situation that we have now? Thank you.
Mr. Jensen?
Sam Jensen, Town Engineer. Uh, yes, the intent of the request for these easements is to support pedestrian phase crossings. So this, uh, this project would include pedestrian signal heads and improved alignment for all the crosswalks and all the approaches.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will open the voting. Ten seconds. And just please remember, as you exit the building tonight, make sure to deposit your clickers back out in the, uh, where they came from. Voting is closed. The article passes. I will, I will make a motion to dissolve the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a wonderful night.